Aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item three, public appearances and citizen's comments. Citizen comments, an item not listed on this agenda. No debate will occur with the board on items introduced by citizens. Items will not be acted upon at this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff or committee of, committee if action is required. Uh, please keep your comments in three minutes. Is there any one on there would like to speak? Okay, hearing none, uh, look for an approval of the consent agenda.
This is Tammy, I make motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm Mike Bell, second.
Give it to Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. You have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item five, board business. Discussing consideration, original alcohol beverage retail license application for shop self-service drink. Doing business as Nuglars BP mark for one-one-twenty-two to six-thirty-twenty-two. Uh, and Lynn, I guess you had told me they're ch going from a, um, to an, uh, from an LLC to a, a regular, uh.
They've, they've changed the, they've changed their corporate name, um, and they want it to be effective on January first of twenty-two. So that's what this application is for, for the name change and to be effective one-one of twenty-two.
Is there any discussion on this item? Um, Lynn, can I ask, do we have to do A and B separately, or could we vote on them together?
You can do them together if you want, I believe B is the cigarette license, which needs to change as well.
Okay.
We haven't had any problems with them in the past, correct? I mean, this is just a changeover of a currently operating business?
Correct.
This is Tammy, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve items A and B.
Henry, I'll second.
Okay, we have motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item C, discussion consideration, operator's license expires six-thirty-twenty for Jake M Lynch.
Uh, all staff reviews have been completed, uh, the recommendation is for approval.
Um, this is Henry, I'll, uh, move to, I'll make a motion to approve the operator license for Jake M Lynch.
Michael Bell, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item D, discussion, discussion, Strand Engineering Task Order for sanitary sewer user. Change system update, uh, rate study. Uh, Drake, do you want to speak on that a little bit, or somebody from Strand?
Uh, we do have representatives from Strand here to answer any questions if you have them, but we're continuing to steadily, uh, progress towards the eventual, uh, plant upgrade project to come into compliance with the phosphorus requirements of the state. And part of that is to, uh, conduct a rate study for a future implementation of a rate increase, uh, to cover the costs of the project as well as the operation of the plant following, uh, that project. Um, so that is what this task order will do, uh, Strand has completed, uh, rate studies for us in the past. Uh, they just did our most recent one. Uh, and this will let us know what the rates will need to be to support the project and its operations going forward.
Can I ask, this is Peggy, what is the, um, projected profit, uh, in order to, um, comply with the rate case? Does it have to be between one and three percent, or is there a ballpark figure that they are actually looking for?
I'm not sure I understand, uh, the question.
The question?
Strand.
If I can, Peggy, I think you're, you're asking about a, a rate of return.
Right.
Like you see with, uh, light or water. Uh, the, the wastewater utility is not PSC regulated, and so they are not, um, you know, they're not telling us what a health, what a healthy rate of return will be.
Oh.
Travis, can you tell us what a target rate of return is for that, for a healthy, um, wastewater utility?
So the, I think the equivalent for wastewater projects would be the, uh, debt coverage ratio that they require. So the amount of revenue that you need to bring in above the, uh, the debt payments and O and M payments. And for the clean water fund loans that, uh, the village would likely be pursuing for this project, you need, uh, debt coverage ratio of one point one. So you need to bring in ten percent revenue above the, the baseline needs for your debt service and your O and M costs. So that's one of the items that we make sure to evaluate when we do these rate studies, uh, is, is to update the revenue, O and M costs, projected debt service in the future, uh, to make sure that you're meeting those debt coverage requirements. And then I just wanted to point out too, that we're, we're looking into the principal forgiveness for, uh, potential grants, especially with the infrastructure bill that was just passed, the guidance hasn't been, uh, issued for that, uh, for, for the new bill yet, but, uh, we're, we're closely watching that because it will, uh, impact the amount of that principal forgiveness grant money that's available. So that's something that we're keeping an eye on, and that'll be included in the evaluation of the rate study.
Okay, that, that's where, what I was looking for, thanks, um, thank you.
So we need a motion on this, correct Drake?
Yes, a motion to, um, approve the task order.
Yes, this is Peggy, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to, um, approve the task order for the sewer rate study.
This is Tammy, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item E, discussion consideration, resolution twenty-one dash twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one, budget amendment number one. Uh, Drake or Lynn, would you like to speak on this?
Lynn, can you take us through this one, please?
Sure, uh, this actually is part of, we had talked about this with the twenty-twenty-two budget as our way of funding the end loader going forward, um. There was some surplus in the debt service fund that we are able to utilize for a one-time expense. After speaking with both Lers and our auditors, they felt that this was the best option. Uh, as far as the budget amendment, we could do it now for spending in twenty-twenty-two. And so that's the proposal before you. If there's any questions?
And it's largely procedural, so it's not affecting, uh, the bottom line of the budget in, in any way.
I'm going to go ahead, this is Peggy, and, uh, approve resolution twenty-one dash twenty-seven, uh, the budget amendment.
Tammy, I'll second.
Okay, uh, we require a roll call vote on this, please Lynn.
Yes. Michael Bell?
Yes.
Henry Janisch?
Yes.
Peggy Cruz? Peggy?
Yes, did you hear me?
Yes, yeah, thank you. Tammy Newberry?
Yes.
Chuck Phillipsen?
Yes.
And Roger Trupman?
Yeah.
Thank you, motion carried.
Okay. Item F, consideration discussion, resolution twenty-one dash twenty-nine, appointment of patrol officer. Um, I guess Bert, do you want to speak on this?
Sure, I can do that. Um, before he was a resolution to appoint Hunter S. Cronin, uh, to the full-time position of a police officer here at the village, uh, employment would take effect, uh, no earlier than on December twenty-seventh, and we're tentatively looking at possibly a December twenty-seventh start date for him, but not any earlier than that. This has been a five-minute struggle to get to this stage, uh, I think we have a really good candidate there, and I hope we can proceed forward with getting them in and getting them on board right away.
Sure, do you need a motion, is that what we need?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve. Hunter, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, as a patrol officer for Nuglars.
This is Henry, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, this is Chuck. Uh, I see the item, item listed, I don't see any, I don't see any background information, I don't see any recommendations from publics, safety, I don't see any recommendations from personnel, is there, is this, has this been somehow pre-approved, uh, I don't know who, I don't know this person. Um, so maybe you could fill me in on this.
Yeah, we mentioned it at the last, uh, uh, public, uh, safety meeting, it was, we brought it up on the, the hiring process and a little bit of history, how we got to where we got, and how we ended up, uh, with the candidate that we now have. Um, other than that, typically prior to this, we didn't really release a whole lot. I mean, we've conducted a in-depth background, uh, investigation, he's partake, uh, in a psychological, uh, evaluation, a medical valuation, a drug screen valuation, so on and so forth. But, uh, typically for the last ten years I've been here, we really haven't presented a whole lot more to that. I know at some point in time when he has his actual swearing in, that takes place at the, at the, uh, at a village board meeting where he'll take his oath, oath of office and get formally sworn in as an officer, uh, at that point in time, we'll present a little bit of a background to, about him, but other than that, uh, there's not a whole lot.
Well, I, I, I have no objection to the, to the, uh, to this person, at least as far as I know, but I also have no information on, uh, on this, I, I, I just find it very peculiar that we, uh, come up with the resolution for appointment of an employee with no, basically no, uh, no information. Uh, but no recommendation, no staff recommendation, no, uh, committee recommendation. Am I, am I missing something here, has this been the procedure for?
That, uh, I mean, it's kind of a unique field which we live in, I know, uh, the last three, the last four applicants that we had on this panel, which we started five months ago, uh, one of them washed out in a background investigation, the other three all accepted other jobs before we could, uh, get to them to offer them a formal job. And, uh, when we had the opportunity to pull Hunter, uh, into our process, we basically have to jump on it because as it was, there was another department, uh, wishing to provide him a conditional offer. So unfortunately, if I sit around and we wait two weeks, we could lose, uh, another prospective employee and have to start everything all over again and take another four or five months to get to where we're at tonight. Uh, I have worked with Drake, uh, throughout this entire process, uh, and the two of us have gone back and forth with him as far as where we're at, how we got here and everything like that. But I mean, if you want to, uh, table it and have us come back in the January meeting, uh, hopefully we can still retain him. And, uh, we haven't spent a whole lot of money on nothing, and, uh, see if we can keep him, keep him in line till the next meeting.
I, I would just clarify, he does come with the, the chief and the lieutenant's recommendation, uh, for hire. Um, the process is, is moved, you know, after speaking with chief, Chief Boldabuck, he's, this is an officer with, with some past experience, about two years of experience as an officer with another a- agency, and he had approached, um, the Nuglars Police Department with interest in, in working, uh, for the agency. And so, uh, the lieutenant and the chief conducted, uh, the interview with him and, and recommended, and are recommending his, his hire, uh, to that position. And the, 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 the hope has been to, to move quickly to stay ahead of the, the competitive, uh, job market for police officers at this time, so, um, that, that's the, 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 the recommendation that is coming from the, from the department, uh, for his appointment. Uh, due to the, the, the nature of the, of the recruitment process, uh, over the last couple of weeks, it did not, it has, it did not go to a Public Works Public Safety Committee meeting for a, a, a recommendation. It was mostly just a briefing at their, at their Monday meeting that it would be coming up on Wednesday, and that was included in the, uh, Police Department monthly report that they give, uh, to the Public Works Public Safety Committee. So that's just a little bit of background, uh, for you.
So, so you're saying that we are, we are, uh, we are, we, we, we are in a situation where you have, we have to hire people under the gun. I, I want to reiterate, I don't have any objection to this, to this hiring, but I do wonder about the procedure. I, I, I just can't imagine that we don't have a recommendation from the Public Safety Committee at the least, Public Safety Personnel at the most, and, um, suddenly we're saying that we, we, we got to hire this person, or somebody else will, and we don't know, we don't know beans. And we will find out beans prior to the swearing in, according to what, uh, Chief Boldabuck has just said, which is, uh, seems to be a little bit, uh, a, a, a little bit wacko. Uh, so, I, I just, I, I, I'm sorry, I, I, I don't understand the.
Can I, can I interject here real quick, Chuck?
Well, yeah.
Okay, uh, chief, could you just go through like a background with this guy during this meeting so that we, uh, uh, we can get that information, and then that, that would appease everyone here? Or would it be more preferable if we could just, uh, break into a private meeting? Because this is also a discussion of a, uh, uh, backgrounds of a, a personnel.
Now, we can't do that, Mike, because it's, you know, because of the, because of the laws, but, um,
Okay.
as far as a private meeting.
Okay.
I, and I'm not questioning the, the person we're talking about, I'm questioning the procedure and, and, uh.
Right, and, and I understand you're questioning the procedure, but it also seems like you're, you're nervous about the under the gun. You, you brought this up before, where you don't like to make split decisions on things. And, and that's fine, that's, it's smart to be able to weigh all your options and think about everything. Um, I'm just wondering if, for the future, so are procedures, if we, because this is a, a high, high caliber field where you gotta, you gotta get in there and hire that person before they're taken by somebody else. Because you, you do want the cream of the crop for policing. Um, and if you don't get it, then you're, you're gonna get stuck with some very unfavorable, favorable positions. And in a, uh, uh, department where we are very, very close to the public eye with a lot of visitors throughout, uh, all, all, all over the, the world, actually, that will come to Nuglars, um. Maybe it is, uh, beneficial to have, you know, to try and also keep everything expedited, and, and, you know, we're all kind of in the, in the know of what's going on, just have like a little blurb on, on who this person is and, and, uh, make sure that it goes by the board and, and is favorable for, for the board.
This is Peggy, um, at Monday's meeting, most of the information that the chief and Drake shared, uh, tonight was shared with us at Monday's meeting, and we did discuss the fact that, uh, they had looked for five months, and all that information was, was presented to us at the meeting. So we, I, I felt that, um, you know, we, I had as much knowledge as I needed and the, um, and the approval of, um, staff and the police department. So normally the background, a particular background then of where the person has been is usually given at the, is, at the swearing in. But again, um, the pressure of hiring under the gun, as you say, is, is a reality. And I've seen us go through very, um, detailed processes and, uh, we, only to have someone leave within a month or so, so.
Well, I would, I would like.
Having heard that, Peggy, why, why is, why is there no recommendation from the Public Safety Committee on item F, uh, resolution?
I don't know why it wasn't on there, I maybe missed, it wasn't typed on, or I, I have no idea.
It was, it wasn't listed as an action item, so the Public Works Public Safety Committee never, never, never took action. It was informed as part of the Police Department's monthly report. I guess if I can, just, just to clarify, if, if, in, in the past, this, the board hasn't been, at least in my time, hasn't been, um, involved in detail in frontline hires for like a public works laborer, or, or the, or, uh, the deputy clerk position, or, or police officers. But if the board would like that to be part of, of, of formal interviews for those positions, we can certainly set that, set that process up to, to have that level of involvement.
I think you, you missed my point. Um, I, I'm not asking that the, that the board be, be the interview viewers for this position. I'm just wondering why the appropriate committee or committees did not pass on a recommendation on this if they, if they discussed it. And I would certainly hope they discussed it, Peggy said they did. Um, I, I, I just, uh, I, I, I don't know that we have ever passed on, uh, uh, the power of hiring solely to the, to the department head. It's, it's gen, it, it, it's my, my, uh, feeling, my, my, uh, knowledge that at least committees have looked into the personnel. And I'm, and I'm sure that's been done, but I'm just curious to why that hasn't been shown here on our agenda.
Uh, part of it is, uh, sorry, I wonder if part of it is that the Public Works and Safety met on Monday, and these, the meeting notes and everything were prepared like last Thursday, Friday?
Well, no, no, I, I, I just want to, I just want to.
That doesn't excuse it, I mean, it.
I want to be, I want to be transparent, uh, for the board. The, the, the Public Works Public Safety Committee wasn't informed of, of the Police Department's choice, and, and they're, and they're moving forward to the village board to seek the appointment. It was, the, the Public Works Public Safety Committee did not take action, uh, on, on the hire, as they were not part of, they were not in, in interviewing, they were not in an interview capacity for this role. So if we would like the committees to, to be involved in the, the interview process for frontline staff, we, we certainly can. Uh, in this case, it was a, a staff level interview with the staff recommendation to the village board, for the village board, who has the sole ability to, to hire employees, uh, and all employees, uh, for the village. So if we would like to have, uh, interviews at the committee level, we can certainly, uh, implement that process going forward, uh, to have the, the, the committees involved in the, in the interview process, uh, for these, these frontline positions.
I think you're still missing my point. I'm not even asking that the, that the committees interview, uh, the applicants, but at least that they, um, that they, uh, discuss and decide on, on the decisions made by the, by staff, which I assume, uh, in this case is the department head, uh, plus the administration. Uh, and, and this doesn't seem to have been, been done. So, uh, at the very least, I would expect a recommendation, uh, prior.
I, I think if I can just interject something here really quick.
That the, that the, uh, information has been presented to the Public Safety Committee, and, um, you know, with no, with no objection. Uh, I'm just, I'm, 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 I, I reiterate, I don't have a problem with the hire, what I have a problem with is the procedure that we don't have all the information, uh, that we need based on, and I'm not talking about information about the, about the, uh, potential employee. I'm talking about, uh, the fact that this has been vetted, not only by the department heads or the chief of police, but by the appropriate committee, so that there's.
Mm-hmm, I, I can commit to improving that procedure in the future. Uh, I'll, I can make that commitment to the, to the board.
Did for all the positions, Drake, public works, utilities?
That's correct.
Yes, a- absolutely. Uh, I, I think that goes without saying. I think we should also, uh, keep in mind that, um, hiring people under, quote, under the gun, unquote, uh, you know, that doesn't really, that doesn't bide well with me, but, um, I, I understand the situation, but still, this is a very serious, uh, Mike, I think Mike, Michael Bell, uh, explained this, uh, very well, that, uh, we got to be very careful about, about how we proceed here, and that's just a, it's just a, uh, warning bell from me.
Yeah, and that, that is also why, you know, there's such a stringent testing process that, that, that new applicants have to go through, uh, in order to actually get into a position. They go through multiple interviews with people, they go through a background check, they go through a psychological cha- check to make sure that they're, they're not actually unstable in any way, shape or form with a registered psychologist. You know, so they're, they do also go through a lot more, uh, hiring process hurdles, so to speak, than any other normal person would, would go through for, for any position. So, you know, you also have to have that kind of in the background of, of your mind then as well. You know, in addition to all these things, we're also looking at, do they have the academy, which is, uh, you know, well, when I went through four hundred and twenty hours of, of stuff, now I think it's five twenty, no, I think it was five twenty, so it went up, if, I believe Jeff knows offhand.
Seven twenty now.
Seven twenty now, yeah. So it's going higher and higher on the requirements for, for people to get into these positions here too, so.
And I can tell you too, Chuck, we did do a full background and everything on it.
I have, I, Jeff, I have, I have no doubt, I have no doubt of any of this, it's just that, um, when it comes to, uh, uh, the meeting that we decide on this, the resolution is presented, and we get a two-sentence, um, we get a two-sentence explanation of a resolution for a very important hire, I, I don't think that's sufficient. And, and I'm not, you know, I'm not faulting the department, I, I think it's, I think it's our fault, all of us, and we need more, we need to refine what we're doing here in the future, and, uh, that's, yeah, so I hope, I hope we can take this up at a later time.
I think, I think the only thing that I want to interject here really quick is the fact that hiring police officers today is no easy task. And what we had to do, Chuck, on this case, was our top three applicants already took different jobs. One went to Waukesha, one who didn't even have the academy that we would have had to pay for five thousand dollars to send him to the academy. We would have had to pay his wages, pay his health insurance, took a job at, uh, another large department that paid better than we did. And the third one took a job at a county sheriff that just came out of the academy, that took a job at the county sheriff, and he accepted that position, so that left us absolutely nothing. Mr. Hunter came into RPD wanting to work here, and he says, I've applied at another department, and I'd like to apply at your department because you're nearby where I live. At the other department, I don't care to communicate. The other department, I don't care to commute to, but they start me at two dollars an hour more than I will make here. So Lieutenant Sturtevant and I had to act fast, I mean, we had to get scheduled medicals, we had to do interviews, we had to do backgrounds. Uh we had to do all sorts of stuff to offer him. A contingent office offer on a Friday before another department, the bigger department that paid him two dollars an hour more than we did. Were gonna offer him a job offer on Monday. At their village meeting. So, if we didn't act when we would have, we would have reset the clock and taken another five months. To try to hire another officer, you know, four to five months, so unfortunately, in the climate today is you're finding. Uh hiring bonuses, retention bonuses, you're finding all sorts of financial incentives. For people to go to work for different departments, so I I understand what you're saying and I wish we could do better. And my concern is if we table this for another two weeks, he's gonna be gone. So unfortunately, in today's environment, we do have to act appropriately and we have to act rapidly and that's just the way things are today.
I don't think you understand what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, and I've said, this is about the fourth time I've said this tonight. Everything you just said. Should have been presented. To the public safety committee. Which I hope it was and then passed on as a recommendation to the village board. Because all I have here is. The police department has completed their recruitment and vacant police office position is recommending the appointment of Hunter S. Cron to the position. The hiring resolution is included in your packet. As far as hiring. Personnel, I have no. That's just nothing to me as a village board member.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
Understand what I'm saying? I I think, I think in future. This should be more fully presented. To the board, which has the ultimate. Decision to make on this hiring and. I I hate to belabor the situation, I know many of you are sitting there saying, what the hell is he, is he gonna shut up? No, I'm not gonna shut up, this is a very important thing. To the village and they're gonna, and I will repeat, hiring under the gun, I I I will never go for that, never, ever. If if we lose somebody, we lose somebody. If if I'm not completely convinced that this person is uh suitable for the position. And I don't, and I still don't know. Much about this person, but. Jeff has vouched, so um I'm okay with it.
I mean, I have no problem giving you the nickel version of his background if you.
I don't, I don't, I don't need it right now, just saying that hopefully it was given to the public safety committee. And uh in future, it'll be more fully explained. To the board, to the board at the time of uh making a decision.
We will improve the process going forward Chuck, I'm not sure you have that.
Okay, um. Is there any more discussion, otherwise we need a motion?
We already had one. We had a motion in a second.
Yeah, we do.
We have a motion by Tammy and a second by Henry.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Uh item six presidency report, all I gonna say is uh. Some of the boxes down the village hall are filling up because. Some of you aren't picking up all your uh agendas and stuff, so if you'd get down and pick them up please before the first of the year. We'd appreciate it. Any further business from the board? Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Everyone have a safe and happy holiday.
Thank you, you too Tammy.